This regular meeting of the Navasota City Council is called to order on Monday, the ninth of September, and council chambers let the record show all council members present. Welcome. Thank you for being here this evening. We ask that you put your cellphones in silent mode, and visitors, please sign in, and if you wish to speak under visitors' remarks, please fill out the form found in back, state your name and address at the podium, as we must document all meeting business, and remarks limited to three minutes. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Mac Vaughn, then followed by the pledges.
I have a substitution. John McKay is gonna do it tonight. Well, let's pray. Oh gracious God, we just give you thanks for this opportunity to get together to discuss matters of the city. We thank you for the leadership. We thank you for the citizens that reside here in this community. God, your blessings continue to roll and rest upon each and every one of us. Sometimes we just need to step out of the traffic of our lives and realize that you are with us. God, we call upon the power of your Holy Spirit to be with us in this time of evil and aggression and war. We just ask that your peace just settle in upon our world, God. Fill our hearts with something other than anger. God, we just thank you for the blessings of being here tonight in this fine city and our leadership. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag, a pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Three remarks, visitors, we have a couple therefore set for item number six. Now, item four, staff report. Mr. Weeks.
Mayor and council, I'll have John McKay come up and give us an update on our CIP projects.
Good evening, Mayor and council. John McKay, graduate engineer. I'll keep it nice and short tonight. The Pecan Lakes gas loop is functional. The new regulator station is up and going and behaving itself. It's working good. Next week, we're gonna have kind of the punch-out, visit with the contractor, you know, find small things that they need to touch up before they leave town. The CIP project, all utility work is now done. I'm sure y'all have noticed, BPI, our paving subcontractors back in town. They're planning, I don't know if they got to it today, but moving equipment over to Sixth Street next for stabilization. From there, they're just gonna kind of work Farquhar Teague Courtney is their current plan, kind of work their way through town. The water well is still drilling. We're on to the kind of next step. We're drilling the hole out a little bit bigger, just like any other large hole, that you want to be straight through a thick piece of anything, you gotta drill a pilot hole first. So now we're going back there and reaming it a little bit thicker. That's all I have unless y'all have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any reports from council on boards and commissions? Just go over a few dates, some things coming up here. We've got on the 11th, Coffee with the Chamber at Baker Goodwin Fine Art. That is this week, I believe at nine o'clock. The 12th, Chamber Mixer at Navasota Theater Alliance at 5:30. The 13th of this week, the Daddy Daughter Dance, which I believe is already quite popular. We've got lots of folks signed up.
We are completely full.
Completely full, okay. All right. At six o'clock at the Navasota Center. Lots of daddies and daughters, that's great.
We have several people that are upset that they didn't register sooner than.
And on the 14th is the opening day for soccer, and also the farmer's market that day. The 18th is the Red Cross Blood Drive, 10:30 to 4:30. You can go to redcrossblood.org to make an appointment. That's at First United Methodist Church. On the 19th, there's a text dot meeting at the fairgrounds for the 105 widening project. Public's invited to that. Don't have the hours on that, but anyway, it's during the, no, I think it's 4:30. I think it starts at 4:30.
4:30 to 6:30.
Okay, it's a come and go, so, and it's out at the fairgrounds. On the 20th is the Chamber Golf Tournament. That starts at eight out of Pecan Lakes. The 21st is the Fantastic Fall Sippin' Shop Downtown Retailers participating in that. And big, big deal coming up. Two days, we're gonna have the steam train, the Union Pacific Steam Train, number 4014. It's making two whistle stops in Navasota. I want to say, if I look back, I think we were the only one, at least in Texas, and if not all the states, that's traveled from Montana, that's getting two stops in their community. So we're pretty proud of that. October 4th, Friday, from 11:00 to 11:30. And then October 7th, Monday, from 1:30 to 2:00. There'll be 30, two 30-minute whistle stops here on two different days. And there will be lots of folks here. They're gonna travel from lots of miles around to come check out the steam train. So, and we're also working with the school on an art project to celebrate that. And our, our status is a Train Town USA. And so anyway, it's gonna be at McAlpine Railroad, and our local PD has got everything lined up for, it's kind of closing off areas there, so, so you can, you'll be able to walk over to that area.
Mayor, I also want to remind everybody that the Chamber of Commerce is having an after-hours mixer here at City Hall on September 26th as well.
Yes, sir.
Name is Mac Vaughn, 402 Teague. I forgot to mention, and I shouldn't ever have forgotten, you know, September 11th is coming up, and there's no organized meetings of people. But you know, God talks to us one-on-one. Don't miss an opportunity we must never forget. And we can look at what's going on in our world today. It just continues to escalate. So I want to encourage you to find that place in your house, your closet, your war room, whatever, to take a little time out for prayer on the 11th.
Mayor, the VFW is offering first responders a breakfast that morning.
Where?
At the VFW.
And I believe St. Joe's is also doing.
Lunch.
They're doing lunch. Much appreciate that. Item five, consideration of possible action on request from Christian Community Services, Inc., located at 18 North LaSalle in Navasota, Texas for a credit to their utility account in the amount of 200, up to $200 per month, beginning October 1, 2024, ending September 30 of 2025.
Mayor and council, on an annual basis, it's something that council has approved for several years. We, we allow Christian Community Services a 200, up to a $200 a month credit on their utility bill for water, sewer, and gas. They're asking for the continued assistance in the utility bill for next fiscal year. This translates to 450 Grimes County residents each month that received services over the last year. Eighty-five thousand eight hundred ninety-nine point six-four pounds of food from the Brazos Valley Food Bank was provided, which the cost of the food was amounted around over $18,000. There's a representative here tonight that'd like to get up and provide an annual report for you related to that.
Hello? My name is Morgan Porter. I'm currently serving as the president of the board for Christian Community Services. Pat was not able to make it tonight, and she asked me to stand in for her. It's a pretty poor substitute, but I'll do my best. Each of you should have received an information sheet that she had given out. I would like to take a second and read it if you would allow me to.
Please.
Christian Community Services is asking for continued help with the city water bill. Christian Community Services currently is serving 250-plus families, individuals, in Navasota. This does not include those from all over Grimes County, because we serve all of Grimes County, and this translates to approximately 450 Grimes County residents that use the food pantry each month. Christian Community Services purchases food from Brazos Valley Food Bank, and really when we say we purchase food, we're really paying an administration fee. So we always like to buy food from Brazos Valley Food Bank, because we get it at a much cheaper price. And I will allude to a problem that is created for us here in a little bit. For 2023 and 2024, we paid Brazos Valley Food Bank $18,528.98, and that equated to eighty-five thousand eight hundred ninety-nine point six-four pounds of food. We also purchased food from local grocery stores, spending approximately $30,000 in that same period. That equates to approximately 35,000 pounds of food. With food costs going up, as all of you know, if you've been to the grocery store in the last two years, food prices have increased significantly. Because of that, we're spending more to feed our clients. Because, and I'm gonna kind of deviate from the sheet just one second. I just want to say that we've kind of had a tsunami of effects that have hit us over the last couple of years. As I mentioned, inflation has had a dramatic effect on the price of food for individuals and families. And because of that, in the past two years, our census or the number of people that we're feeding each month has grown by 80%, because those people that were before able to get by can't get by now. So they need assistance. And in addition to that, Brazos Valley Food Bank, approximately two years ago, when we placed an order with them, we had about 190 items to choose from. The last order that Pat placed, there were 47 items. I'm not sure why they're not able to get food, but because of that, that's forcing us to go to local grocery stores and pay full retail. So that's what Pat's alluding to right here when she's saying it's costing us more money. In addition, we have a clothes closet, and between July 2023 and July 2024, we put out $785 worth of clothing. It may not sound like a lot, but that's at garage sale type prices. And we want to thank the city for your past support by sending us this credit each month. Because of the factors I just mentioned, it is greatly needed. We need not only the continued support of the city in this, this area, we need some support from individuals, other organizations, and businesses. I will be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any.
The service you provide is just not only for Navasota, it's for Grimes County, right?
That's correct. That's correct. And it's not based on income. We just, we just require a utility bill, just where we can verify that there are Grimes County residents. And anyway, yes. Actually, the majority of our people are from Navasota, because it's closer. There are other, there are other food banks in the county, and many people qualify for several of those. And I'm glad. I'm glad that they're able to do it, because the amount of food that we give out each month, it's not gonna feed them for the entire month. Because they need more help.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the credit to Christian Community Services utility account in the amount of $200 per month, beginning October 1, 2024, through September 30, 2025.
Second motion in the second to apply the credit to Christian Community Services utility account up to $200 beginning October 1, 2024, ending September 30, 2025. Any further discussion? I would just like to point out that it looks like the 200 that we had determined, I think, was a number of years back, and it looks to me like, you know, the number is approaching 300 in some of these months. I always think we might want to consider bumping it to 250.
I'll move. I'll still move?
You do?
Okay.
Second. Okay. Motion in the second to make the amount 250, up to $250 a month for Christian Community Services utility bill. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, seeing none, item carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item six, conduct a public hearing for purposes of receiving public comment on the proposed budget for the city of Navasota fiscal year 2024, 2025. I will open the hearing at 6:16.
Mayor, members of council and public, as part of the process of adopting the budget, there are certain requirements we have to do. If you'll remember, on August 26th, staff held a, on August 5th, I'm sorry, the city manager filed the proposed budget with the city secretary's office as required. On the 26th, staff further discussed the proposed budget. And then tonight, we, we talked about actually having a public hearing. As a reminder, when staff put together the, the calendar, the timeline for the calendar, it was put in place based on us having to do two readings of the ordinance, which the charter changed earlier this year, so we're not required to do that. So tonight, we're not gonna take formal action in adopting the budget, but we do have to take action. And so at the conclusion of this public hearing, the request is to postpone action until the next council meeting. So at this time, I'm gonna go through a short presentation. It's kind of an abbreviated version that you had earlier in August. So just to remind you again, we have our mission statement here. Last year, we went through a strategic planning process. You identified areas that you want to accomplish over the next two to three years, which included planning, economic development, marketing communications, addressing quality of life, and staffing issues, as well as human resource, as we want to train and make sure we retain qualified employees. And then also address facility buildings and infrastructure issues that we have with our buildings, as well as water, sewer, and streets. Earlier this year, in May, we conducted a flash vote survey. In that vote, it went out, the strengths of Navasota, some of those that were acknowledged was community events is very strong, as well as public, physical safety and security, your police and fire, as well as sense of community inclusion and library and programs. They're all kind of tied for second and third there. And then asked, what are most important to you? Of course, condition of the streets and the physical safety and security are very high up, and then followed by our water and wastewater infrastructure. So again, if you look at the, the two main components of what the voters that did the survey ask for is addressing water and wastewater infrastructure, as well as our streets and sidewalks. And then if you had to do any additional investments, what would those be? Of course, better streets. And so taking that information and moving forward, we've compiled the budget. We had the workshop that we had back in March, where we identified some new staffing, some new programming, and some other things. And so just kind of walked through where we've been since then. So the economic picture, right now, we have several active major developments on the residential side. Pecan Lakes Estates, Phase Four is finishing up. Hidden Hills, Phase Two has started. Pecan Grove Estates, Phase One. We just had a pre-construction meeting today, so you're gonna see ground start breaking pretty soon out there in front of Pecan Lakes there along 105 and Pecan Lakes Drive. Roosevelt Street expansion, and then Dub Crossing, PUD, Phase One. On the commercial side, Starbucks is, it looks like the brick's gone all the way around the building, so you're getting pretty close for that. If you've been out to Walmart, you know that they're doing major remodeling. Go in there on a, on a weekly basis, it changes where you might not find what you need to. Austin Hills Strip Center, that was opened up, and some new tenants are filling that. You got the McDonald's remodel, which I think is pretty close to being done. Zeitman's Groceries is still ongoing. The Mid-South headquarters remodel is ongoing. O'Reilly standalone store is still in the process of moving forward. Wildflower Mead and Brewer and Beer is very close to being open. And then Baylor Backyard finished their construction. And then the Flyaway Sea Store, they've already started doing, moving dirt out there. So you look at our residential building permits, year to date is 84. That was back in, from July, compared to 2023, when we had our highest building permits at 157. And then you look at the historical new improvements in personal property, around $35 million compared to previous year at nearly 34 million. So budget highlights, there is a tax decrease, not a very large one, but it is 1.43 cents, going from 52.21 cents to 50.78 cents per 100 assessed valuation. The proposed utility rate increases is per the rate study that we had last year. Again, not as significant increase as we had this current year, but this is per what the rate study is indicating. So it's around 8.2% for water rates increase. Natural gas rate will increase 10.5. Wastewater rates will increase 6.7, adding a new staff for a total of 134.45, full-time equivalents of that. The new is proposed is 11 new positions. We had a traffic enforcement officer, part-time assistant fire chief, parks and recreation specialist, part-time library clerk, and then a main street manager, which is gonna be funded out of the hotel motel taxes. So those will be funded out of the people that come and stay here and then leave. And generally don't, they'll come here and spend their money and then go somewhere else. And so those are not funded through property tax, not funded through sales tax, all through your hotel motels for the nights, overnight stays. And then on the water fund, we're adding two heavy equipment operators and four utility technicians. So that will fund two water crews to assist with the leaks. We've got a pass-through trash rate through public services. It's an annual, annually, we look at the, they look at the CPI. And so with that CPI, and that CPI was a 3.8% increase, which a resident will experience around a 90 cent per month increase. We allocated $294,000 for salary merit increases for average of 4% for our full-time employees, and that includes the benefits of FICA, TMRS, and workers' comp. Our TMRS rates increased from 6.24% to 6.65%. And then our, on our medical benefits, or just the medical side, those increased 6% for a total of $43,225. We increased life insurance for employees up from $30,000 to $50,000 per employee. Our fund balances, you'll see in just a little bit, is at 27.95%. Water fund is at 73.17%. Natural gas is at 42.3%. And wastewater fund is at 66. Ideally, the general fund is at 20, is, you look for 25% fund balance for all of those supplementals. So a total requested of $11.3 million. We're asking to fund 2.2, or 10.2 million, with the majority of that related to capital and CIP items. Total revenue, so what has changed since our last meeting? So as I mentioned before, council members asked to increase the police department's budget by $20,000 by adding three Motorola traffic train cameras. And so that's, that's what's changed right now. So total expenditures is $52,374 and $504 for all of our funds. And when you look at a revenue versus expenditure chart here, it kind of gets a breakout. Of course, your water and general fund are your largest pieces of the pie, and then followed by your other operating. On the general fund revenues, so general fund revenues, the bulk of the increase, of course, over on the far right-hand corner here is 419, the property taxes, that increased. Your IDAs, your IDAs, again, we renegotiated IDAs this year. Those IDAs went from 50% to 60%. So there's a reason for that increase, as well as increase in assessed valuations.
IDAs are what?
IDAs are industrial, are industrial district agreements. So those industrial partners that are out in the industrial district in our ETJ, where we do an agreement with them. The agreement is a very long agreement, and they pay 60% of the assessed valuation on our approved tax rate. Sales tax, we're kind of holding sales tax flat. We've kind of not seen a very increase in our sales tax recently. So that's, that's been held flat. And then, of course, solid waste increasing, that has to do with the rates. And then other, that is for, as I mentioned, there are a couple of capital items we're gonna talk about in a little bit, that we're asking for those to be funded via for short-term loans. And so that's what the revenue for that portion comes in at. The tax rate, we'll talk about this after this next agenda item, but tax rate, as I mentioned earlier, is a reduction. Property values were increased 12.3%, right, 12.4% increase. They went from 687 million up to 772 million. Also increased our average home value from 181.8,000 to 198.8,000. General fund expenditures, so your biggest chunk of your budget there, I know you, it's blurry, but if you look right here, you got police and animal control is at 25%, fire is at 14%, and public works is at 18%. So that is your big chunks of your general fund expenditures. When you look at some of these increases, again, these are mainly all due to either supplemental increases or some of our capital projects, and we'll talk about those in just a second. General fund summary and fund balance, so this has been adjusted. So we're ending the year with a 27.8% fund balance, and previously, it was at 27.9. So by increasing that $20,000 decreased it by 0.1%. Supplemental requests, so a total supplemental request is around 2.4 million. As I mentioned earlier, we're looking at an average of 4% merit salary adjustments, including benefits. We're doing tree trimming and removal throughout the city to allow some of our fire trucks, our solid waste, Republic Services trucks, and those other type trucks that need to get through the roadways to be able to clearly make access through all of our streets. We're increasing the annual street maintenance by an additional 200,000. So now we're spending a little over $600,000 on our annual street maintenance. We're adding a traffic enforcement officer. We're adding two dispatch consoles for the Navasota Police Department. Those consoles are 1970 models. One of them's actually, we're having to buy parts from eBay to be able to piece it together to keep it working. And if I'm not mistaken, only one of them is working now. We're adding a part-time assistant chief in the equipment related to that position. We're adding in design and engineering for the new fire station. We've got five self-contained breathing apparatuses, 40,000 for the fire department. Included in the budget still is the Sherp High Water Rescue UTV. We got a replacement of the library roof at 225,000. That amount was a combination of, we had a, back a year and a half ago, we had a facility study done, which they predicted one amount. And then we also had someone come out and actually give us a quote for the replacement of the roof. And so we used the lower of those two items, which was 225. Again, this is just for budget purposes. We will definitely go out and bid out for this. We will definitely go out and bid out for this service, and so we'll have a better number once we know how much that's going to be. We're asking for Parks Master Plan to actually look at all of our park system. Currently, right now, we're doing feasibility study for the Navasota Center swimming pool and our Brewley Park. This master, Parks Master Plan will look at all of our parks in totality, as well as a plan to put together about how to address ADA needs, as well as a maintenance plan for all of our parks. We've included the part-time library clerk, part, the Parks and Recreation Specialist. We have the SEGIS Required IT Software. So this year, we had a SEGIS audit, and they came back and said, you pass, but here's some recommendations for going next, going forward, so these are required. So it's some IT software and antivirus requirements. The police department's getting mobile CAD and GPS system. Again, the Main Street Manager position, which will be funded, as I said, through the hot funds, and then we're actually asking for an HR information system, which will allow us to better track applicants for any job openings that we have. General fund major budget items, so what you see on the sheet here represents seventy-seven, nearly seventy-eight percent of the total general fund expenditures. Again, personnel represents around eight million dollars. Non-payroll supplementals that we're adding is around five hundred and ninety-one thousand. The Republic Services garbage contract is one point three million. The annual street maintenance program is six hundred and twenty-five thousand. The capital lease purchase payments, so the, the capital leases are those payments that we make to enterprise and anything that we, we have where we did short-term notes on for the fire truck and those type things, so that, that accounts for that. Design engineering for the fire station at six hundred thousand, as I mentioned. Replacement for the roof at the library, two hundred and twenty-five thousand. We budgeted three hundred thousand dollars in for the annual mowing contract. Currently, that is out for bid. Once we get that in, staff will start evaluating whether we want to bring that in-house for customer service purposes. But again, the first year, it definitely is going to be around three hundred for us to bill, have to purchase equipment and hire staffing for that. That will be coming back to you if that's what staff decides is the best use of trying to handle the mowing contract. Motor vehicle gasoline is around a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, electricity a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, and I just put it in there so you know that it's added in there, it's the three Motorola traffic train cameras. Again, those cameras are going to be located on the, the train area, and will allow dispatch to be able to monitor when we have trains that are blocking the intersections, will help, that will assist with fire and EMS and as well as PD. And just for social media purposes, so we can push it out, let people know what opening, what intersection is actually open. So we move on to the water fund. The water fund revenues is around nearly twelve point two million dollars, with expenditures around fifteen point two million. Water sales being up two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Again, that is with that, that small rate increase. The other big items is the grant funds. So we, we, we received ARPA funds, and those ARPA funds have set in a liability prepaid type account, and so with that, that means once we're able to spend that, those funds, then we can recognize it as revenue. And so since we're out there working on the water tower and the water well, that's where those funds are being allocated to, and so we've put it in for next year's budget of acknowledging that revenue is one point three million. The bond proceeds of six hundred, or six million three hundred thousand, that is for a couple of CIP projects we'll talk about in just a minute. Then when you talk about the expenses, again, water distribution and water production, mainly those large increases of the two point three million and six point five million are related to our CIP. Supplemental request, again, looking at the merit increase of up to four percent. We, we have the water well rehab for one location, seventy-five thousand. We're going to be painting, piping at two water well, water wells at four, at forty thousand. The water plant pump house, pipe planting and window replacement at sixty thousand. The weather coverings for the water wells at thirty thousand, adding the two water crews, which is a total of six FTEs, full-time equivalents, and their equipment is around six hundred and sixty-one thousand, which will help out with the water leaks and other productivity items related to the water crew. We got a new water well, which is that, that's part of that big dollar amount, so this is in addition to the current water well that we're doing now, two point two-five million. One-third cost of a traffic message board. PD currently has a small one that we're utilizing. This will be a little bit bigger. This will be like the one you see on, on Tech Stock right of ways that Tech Stock puts up. We got a water valve replacement of a hundred, of a hundred thousand, and then the ground storage tank and water plant out that will compy the water tower and water, water well at three point eight-five million. So major budget items, so all these budget items here in the water fund represent eighty point six percent of the total water fund budget. Personnel is nearly a million dollars. Capital items that I mentioned just while ago is around seven point one, which is the completion of the water, the current water well, the new water well that we're looking at do, which would be water well number nine at two point two-five. The ground storage and water plant of three point eight-five million. We've got a backhoe and skid stir that's going to be required for the wa, the new water crews, the signboard, and then also we're doing grant match funds for CDBG MIT mod emergency generators related to our water locations for generators. We got debt service payments of one point, nearly one point two million, a reimbursement to general fund for cost of a billion dollars. What this is, is you've got certain positions and, and operations that are paid for in the general fund that do water fund activities. So finance is one of the biggest ones, easy for you to understand. When you come in to pay your utility bill, you've got utility billing clerks there, and those utility billing clerks, that's all they do is water fund items, and so, or utility items, and so those costs need to be transferred over and reimbursed to the general fund, so that's what that represents. And then we have what we call pilot, is payment in lieu of tax. So similar to our electricity and our communications providers for utilities, this is a, a franchise of payment that you pay based on gross revenue. So basically, this is a percentage of the gross revenue that the water fund generates is paid back to the general fund for franchise. We got water well maintenance of four hundred and eighteen thousand, new meters, water meters, a hundred and thirty-six thousand. Electricity for operations are a hundred and thirty-six thousand. Fire hydrant maintenance program, we want to continue doing now that we did the replacement of those, all the fire hydrants this last year. We want to make sure that we are still maintaining the current fire hydrants, as well as updating some of the ones that we weren't able to replace. That's a hundred thousand. Your capital lease purchase payments, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, and we have to budget depreciation of five hundred thousand. So when you look at the summary here, again, we're at a hundred and seventy-three days of excess number, number of days, so ideally ninety days is your operating expense, which is one point two. We have excess of two point four, and so ideally, it's kind of about where you want to keep the numbers, is enough to be able to pay for your CIP projects and for one year's worth of debt service payments or any debt or lease payments that you have in the water fund. Talk about natural gas fund. Natural gas fund, again, we've got around six point three million dollars of revenue and six point two million dollars of expenditures. Not too, not too much on the revenue side, other than the gas meters, the gas meter sales increasing due to the increase in the rates. And then on the expense side, the gas distribution decreased, and the reason it's decreasing is, is because we actually had a CIP project that we finished, and so we don't have that expense anymore. Supplemental items, so of course, we had the merit increases. We've got Phase Four of Pecan Lakes Gas Loop. Then we need to finish that out is eighty thousand five hundred, and rehabbing three natural gas regulator stations at sixty thousand, and then the gas funds paying one-third of the message board that, of six thousand. When you look at the major budget items, everything on this list, this is ninety-seven, this nearly ninety-eight percent of your expenditures is all on this one page. Three hundred and twenty thousand is your personnel, gas purchases, so we, we bill for operations, your, the rates that we have for natural gas that we charge, those rates pay for the operations portion, and then everybody, whether you're a commercial, resident, or whatever, or industrial or nonprofit, you pay a hundred percent of the gas purchase cost. And so we have to purchase our gas. We have a, a three-year agreement on that rate, and that represents three point seven million dollars of gas purchases. We transferred to the debt service, for debt service payments, around a hundred and twenty-two thousand, and the reimbursement to the general fund for cost is eight hundred and sixteen thousand. The pilot is five hundred and seventy-three thousand. We have to budget for depreciation, a hundred and fifty. Gas meters and regulators that we purchased for new developments, a hundred thousand. Motor vehicle gasoline is twelve thousand. Capital lease payments is eighty thousand. Maintenance on the gas regulator is seventy thousand, and then, as I mentioned earlier, completion of the gas loop system out at Pecan Lakes is seventy thousand, as well as the message board, six. So it gives you sixty-two days of excess fund balance, and so, again, the requirement's ninety, and so we're at sixty-two days above the ninety requirement. Wastewater funds, wastewater fund is nearly three million dollars revenue and three point two million dollars of expenses. Again, the wastewater sales, the revenue coming in, the reason for the increase of two hundred and fifteen thousand is related to the, the rates of increasing. On the expenditure side, the largest expense is related to the sewer collection portion there, and here's why. So this represents ninety-five percent of your total major budget items. Personnel is three hundred and seventy-seven thousand. We transferred the debt service to pay for debt payments of four hundred and forty-seven thousand. Reimbursement to the general fund is four hundred and sixty-six thousand. Maintenance of the wastewater treatment plant, three hundred and seventy-five thousand. The sewer main maintenance is a hundred and thirty-five thousand, with the sewer lift station maintenance of a hundred and five. Of course, the required budget for depreciation, two hundred and forty thousand. The pilot, the pilot, the payment in lieu of tax is two hundred and sixty-four thousand. Maintenance of the wastewater treatment plant, that must be wording, it's wrong, sorry. Capital lease is ninety-three thousand, electricity of a hundred and two. And the biggest item, as I mentioned earlier, for the increase on the expenditure side is a grant match for the CDBG MIT mod for emergency generators on the wastewater treatment side for three hundred and twelve thousand. supplemental request items, we're doing some wastewater plant oxidation ditch dredging of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We're going to repair the wastewater treatment plant restrooms and the flooring, chlorine scales, which is a TCEQ compliance issue, so it's twenty-five thousand. The biggest ticket item on here that I want to make sure that you understand is the Cedar Creek stabilization study. So the outflow from the wastewater treatment plant into Cedar Creek, there's a lot of erosion that is occurring at that location, and so this study is going to identify how we can stabilize that and address those issues, and so that is, I think, is one of the, when you see this page, that's, that's the most important thing on this page. We're going to do some sewer system smoke testing, the sixty thousand, replace the manholes, lids along the saw ditch line, and of course, the weather coverings of the two lift stations. Again, thirty thousand for that, and as we, staff mentioned to Mayor Pro Tim Gessner last time, once we closer to that, we'll look for other alternatives for cost. Again, we have to budget for something, and so this is what we put out there. If we can always identify savings on these, is something we definitely will look forward to. But for the wastewater treatment fund, the wastewater fund here, it's a hundred and thirty-four days excess of the ninety days. And then we got to the new utility rates. So utility rates, as I mentioned earlier, were increasing, and so on this page, basically just identifies if you, if you use six thousand gallons of water, six MCFs of natural gas, and your wastewater charges based on the winter average of three thousand gallons, your bill will increase from a hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-eight cents to a hundred and sixty-three dollars, which is a twelve dollar and sixty-two cent a month increase, or eight point four percent for that month. Economic Development Corporation, so they're meeting next week to approve, to actually have their public hearing on their budget. But again, sales tax is flat, expenditures is basically flat, we're not doing anything glamorous on the, on the expense side. Major budget items for that is the note payment for the parking lot of a hundred and forty-six thousand. I think after this year, we got one more payment, and that's it. We have special projects for anything that comes up through the year of a hundred thousand. Small grants for facade and signs is ten thousand. We pay retail coach thirteen thousand dollars to assist with the economic development prospects. We also have the GIS planning Zoom prospector, where we split that cost with the chamber at five thousand. The community job board is three thousand. The place or AI, AI intelligence software, that's what we use for cell phone data, data analysis, so we can let you know how many people, one of the things we're looking at right now is how many cars are, are traveling on Highway Six on game day. And that way, we can kind of let Tech Stock know, hey, here's how many vehicles we have in our area and need some attention on some of our roadways. TEDC and Retail Live conferences, four thousand dollars, and then we provide refreshment sponsorship for the Brian Call Station Chamber Economic Update for fifteen hundred. Other funds, so these are your other funds that you have, that the, whenever you approve, the final budget ordinance will include each of these funds, and so this is just a representation of all the other funds. I'll kind of hit highlights here, so hotel motel funds, you're looking at a hundred and sixty-seven thousand for revenue, expenditures are two hundred and twenty-five thousand, with fifteen percent of that going to arts programs of twenty-three thousand, one-seventh of the hot funds for advertising. We've still got to complete the wayfinding Phase One. So unfortunately, the company that we were utilizing filed bankruptcy, and so legal's helping us doing some filing with them because they didn't, they didn't provide some services, even though we've, we had paid them for it, so there'd be some legal services, we need to do that. But luckily, we have identified another company, so we'll be coming back to you to get that back onboard after the first of the fiscal year, and hopefully get that finalized. And then again, the transfer to the general fund to cover the Main Street program for a hundred thousand. Capital projects, so basically, this is the fund where not too much is happening next year, other than finishing out our large CIP project we got going, so this is where, this is, that's where this is paid from. This five point eight million is related to the large CIP project we have going. Debt service payment, this is where your INS, your interest and seeking portion of your tax rate goes to, and then that's got to transfer in, so that is where the water fund, the gas fund, anything from the general fund that we pay dead on, that's not related to the, the tax rate, as well as the wastewater treatment plant that we pay dead on. So all that's transferred in, and then we've got our, our bond and loan payment principal and interest, that's two point two million. The grant fund, so generally, it's money in, money out. The only difference is there is you got, you got some grant revenue that's coming in that we don't actually have expenditure for, and it has to do with interest. So part of the projects that we got coming up out of the grant fund over on the far right-hand side here, grant funds, CDBG TA, Community Development Block grant of six hundred and seventy-five thousand. We've got the GLO Hardy Funds, around a million dollars. The MIT mod for the generators for the water fund of five hundred and sixty-two thousand. And then for the wastewater generators is around a million dollars, and then we've got NGD ISM gas grant, four point two million, is something we're, we're looking to try to apply for. And then looking at your other capital projects, again, we got the water wells, we got the elevated water tower, the water plant, the new water well number nine, completion of the high-pressure loop gas system out of Pecan Lakes, as well as the wayfinding project, and then completing the twenty-twenty utility, utility CIP project. Went by these fast here, so we do have the foundation, this is our five oh one C three. These are funds, they donated funds, so when your Blue Santa funds, anything that we get from the Brazos Valley Gives Day, anything like that, it comes into these, this account, and then usually what goes out is those funds for Blue Santa. We got the TERS, so we've got a little bit of money starting accumulating out there. No plans to spend that next year, but we just have to count for the, the revenue coming in. And then we got Board of Firemen Service Fund, which, again, explained last, the last meeting that we had, idea is to close that out this year. Our fire chief is going to be working with that one retired firefighter and make sure that we can be able to close that out and move forward with that. And we have cemetery operating, of course, we have Oakland Cemetery. We have budgeted around a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars of expenditure, expenses. Again, trying to do some of that beautification and finalize some projects out there. Budget calendar, as I mentioned. Budget calendar, as I mentioned, tonight, we're actually having the public hearing on the budget. As I mentioned earlier, the requirement is that council's supposed to take action on this. So my request is at the conclusion of the public hearing, the council postpones this until the September 26th. And September 26th is when we'll actually vote on the budget and vote on the tax rate, as well as vote on utility rate increases, as well as the public service rate increase. At this time, entertain any questions you might have.
Yes, back on the Main Street project, from where to where does it start it in?
Yeah, so it's mainly the downtown businesses, is what that is. It's your central, I'm looking at Loupe, central business district is the name, is the defined name of that.
Okay, but if I'm not mistaken, the central district doesn't go all the way down to Washington?
That is correct.
Okay. So it's just going to be?
It's only downtown. That, so Main Street is related to downtown. It's not for a huge, long, drawn-out street. It's for downtown area.
It's like Eighth Street to Millikan Street?
Yeah. Eighth Street to Millikan Street. Is that right?
Eighth Street to Millikan, okay.
Millikan and Nolan.
Okay, going east?
Yes, sir.
No, Eighth Street is going west.
Right.
Nolan is going east? So the people on the, I guess, out of that downtown district won't benefit from this?
No, sir. They'll benefit from other things that the city does through our marketing communications department. So within this, this position has to, number one, in order to be a Main Street city, you have to, you're going to have to have a designated person for the position. That's why there's been a lot of turnover with communities not being a Main Street program, is because they chose not to fund a full-time person. So that is a requirement. And so ideally, that position within that budget that we have, the 138,000, includes personnel costs related to it, as well as $25,000 that we designated for specific advertising for downtown businesses that's in that area. And we, and again, there's an application process we have to do. The application has not opened up. As soon as it opens up, we will be applying, but the application has not been provided yet by the state.
But you are working with a consultant that's given us guidance on it?
And the potential that we would get out of being a Main Street city is?
So number one, you'll be a Main, you'll get your name on the roster. Businesses downtown will get that additional funding that will be needed for advertising, as well as a person that will help out in promoting the business, as well as access to everything that the Main Street program provides to businesses. My understanding is architects and some other professional services, they'll get free of charge to assist them with their business.
Right. And it wouldn't be necessarily not helping people that are on the other side of Nolan because bringing people downtown would get people driving past?
Indirectly, yes, sir.
It would, yeah. I have another question that's different, and I just wrote it down. So the Motorola traffic cameras, the train cameras, that $20,000 is for the three cameras, is that correct? So do we have money or funding in there for additional TVs or monitors? I'm thinking, you know, if you're, you may have to buy four new monitors to put up on the wall so that, I would hate for them to be on a little computer screen where the use of them is not as substantial if it was on a huge screen.
Push a button. We have several TVs from seizures.
Okay, good.
I'd like to make a comment on the budget, just in general. The budget is a planning document. It doesn't authorize any action. So this is not the place to necessarily discuss the merits of particular things. We do want to eliminate things that definitely are not going to fly type thing, and that's what the budget can do. It can eliminate things, but it doesn't guarantee the passage of anything that makes the cut, as it were.
Hi, I'm Betsy Leonard. We live on McNair Street. And first, I wanted to say thank you for our nice paved streets. I know it was a real headache for certain engineers, but we have a new fire hydrant that we did not have and really have needed all these years. So that is very good, very much appreciated, and I just haven't gotten your email to tell you that. Also wanted to thank you for the Burley Park Community Meeting. It was very good, and I hope that you'll have more of these on the park because there seem to be a lot of ideas and interest and caring about it. But what I really wanted to say in all this budget is, don't forget the history of this town. There's so many people who love the history and want to preserve it. And the comments I get are that the city only cares about downtown. And that's something y'all just need to be aware that they're kind of, I don't want to say offended, but they're, you know, feeling a little left out sometimes when we're out away from downtown and have homes or businesses. So just keep that in mind. It's not just downtown. I want to encourage you all to continue to maintain the history, encourage churches and houses to keep the charm and the history that we have with our old neighborhoods. We live in Old Town, John. One other thing, the East Washington, you're going, we're going to be at planning and zoning when they discuss whether AutoZone comes in. And, you know, once again, this is the creep of commercialism. And somebody emailed me today and said, don't really want to look like Hempstead. You know, we need to keep our historical areas historical. So just want to encourage that. If you could find it anywhere in your hearts or the budget to help the Horlock House that you all have neglected for years. I know that you've got some negotiations going on there, but I think the city has some responsibility there. And then just finally, it's quality of life. People love to come to Navasota. So many people, especially out in Pecan Lakes, have said, I moved here because of the charm of the town. So keep up the work.
Thank you.
Dia Copeland, 1,000 Grimes Street, Navasota. Thank you for letting me visit with you guys. For many years, I created and implemented and managed large budgets, specifically with CHI St. Joseph here locally, on a much larger scale for Parkland Health and Hospital System, which was the major part of the Dallas County budget. Using a similar process to Mr. Weeks, each department under me had to develop their needs and their wants list, including justifications for each new item, program, use of overtime, expensive, expenses, sorry, personnel requests, and much more. From all those submissions, I totaled all into one huge proposal for approval. However, each year, the wish list became much bigger than the needs list. Those wishes I spread and hid and buried across many, many departments. Every year, then, the bosses would come to me, Dallas County and Parkland, and say, okay, here's your target, cut the budget by 10% to 25%. They gave me a new target every year. So I had to do that. And I did. And how I did it was by cutting the wish list. The budget looked much better with most departments getting their needs approved, most of the time. But those were needs. In reading this year's city budget line by line, and I did that last year and this year, there seems to be a lot of wishes in it. As Pastor Vaughn mentioned, these are terrible times right now for us. As the Christian gentleman from the Christian Community Center mentioned, you know, they're struggling, and more and more families are increasingly going to the Christian Community Center. The economic times are horrific now and seem to be getting worse. Individually, we've all been forced to make serious cutbacks, as evidenced by what Mr. Weeks said, that our sales tax revenue is flat. Businesses are struggling. Inflation is eating us alive. However, you're raising utility rates again, and despite the tax rate cut that was mentioned a few minutes ago, everybody knows our property taxes are going to be going up, which is again, another hit to our citizens. In the past year, the population of Navasota has not increased in proportion to the requested budgets. City departments are asking for more than they even spent last year. So are those wish lists? So I implore you guys, as the bosses, for the sake of our citizens, take the wishes out of the budget. Only keep the needs. Reduce the expense budget, including the personnel request, by at least 15%. Our citizens really deserve your best. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go close the hearing at 7:02.
Mayor, Council, just a minor point on the slide that discusses the budget calendar, September 26th is listed as the date of the meeting. It should be the 23rd, just to clarify that for the audience.
Mayor, I move the city manager revise the proposed budget by deleting the purchase of the high-water rescue vehicle for Navasota Fire Department. The city manager scheduled adoption of proposed budget for September 23rd, 2024, City Council.
Second. Motion to the second, motion as stated. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Seeing none, I am curious. Item number seven, conduct a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment on the proposal to adopt the tax rate for fiscal year 2425. And we'll open this hearing at 7:03.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Frank, CFO. On August 1st, the Grimes County Appraisal District calculated our no-new revenue tax rate at .4861 and the voter approval rate at .5215. The no-new revenue tax rate will impose the same amount of taxes as last year if you compare properties in both years. The voter approval rate is the highest tax rate a taxing unit can adopt without holding an election. The proposed total tax rate, .5078, or is .5078, therefore, a public hearing is required. This proposed rate is a reduction of 1.43 cents or 2.7% from the current tax rate. The fiscal year proposed budget was built around this rate, and the breakdown of that is .4599 for maintenance and operations that goes to the general fund, .0479 for interest in sinking, which goes to the debt service fund. In accordance with current legislation, staff placed a notice in the Navasota Examiner informing the public of the date and time that the governing body will vote and approve this tax rate. The notice of public hearing on tax increase on September 9th was published in the August 21st, 2024 edition of the Navasota Examiner. The average homestead value increased from $181,802 to the previous year, in the previous year, to $198,830. The average homestead, based on that rate, would be $1,009.96, which compares to the previous year, $949.19. Due to the increase in assessed valuations, though the proposed tax rate is lower from last year's tax rate and less than this year's voter approval tax rate, the average homestead will pay $60.47 more in 2025 than in the previous year. This tax rate, sorry, this is the language that is required, this tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate. The tax rate will effectively be raised by 5.24% and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a $100,000 home by approximately minus $9. A lot of this information is a reiteration of what Mr. Weeks presented just a little while ago.
Close the hearing at 7:07. Item number eight, consideration of transactional.
Can you announce the?
Oh, yes, dear, I'm sorry. Go back, number seven. Yes. We will conduct a public hearing and announce the vote on the tax rate on September 23rd, 2024, 6:00 p.m. at City Council Chambers here, 200 East McAlpine Street in Navasota, Texas, 77867.
Thank you.
Item eight, consideration of transactional ratifying the tax increase reflected in the budget for fiscal year 2425.
House Bill 3197, which was passed in Texas Legislature in 2007, amend Section 102.007 of the Texas Local Government Code to require that City Council take a separate vote to ratify increased property tax revenues that are reflected in the budget. The FY 2024 to 25 budget is projected to raise more property tax revenues than in FY 2023 to 2024. Therefore, City Council is required to take a separate vote to ratify the property tax revenue increase. The projected increase in revenues from property taxes is reflected in the budget as presented. The budget for FY 2024 to 25 includes projected revenues from property taxes that are greater than the revenues from property taxes in the FY 2023 to 24 by $337,674. Of that amount, $181,816 is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax rule this year. Staff recommends the ratification of the property tax revenue increase for FY 2024 to
Mayor and Council, this is actually an action item tonight.
Yeah. And there is a stated motion there if you choose to do that, and we are having to show a hand for the vote.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the ratification of the property tax revenue increase, $337,674 for fiscal year.
of $337,674 for fiscal year 202425.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gessner, second by Mr. Fulls, to approve ratification of the property tax revenue increase of $337,674 for FY 2425. Any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands. Ayes. Seeing none, I don't carry it. Item nine, discussion on amending the Code of Ordinances Appendix A Fee Schedule, Article A13000, adopting the revised sanitation rates for the city of Navasota with effective date of February 1, 2025, and amending the Code of Ordinances Appendix A Fee Schedule, Article A5.000, adopting the revised water, gas, and sewer monthly rates for the city of Navasota with effective date 10/1, 2024.
As Mr. Weeks stated in his presentation, our budget was prepared with the rate increase for providing trash services by Republic Services as well as the proposed utility rate increase per the utility rate study. Regarding garbage rates, Republic Services is the provider in Navasota for residential and commercial trash collection services. For residential trash collections, those are provided once per week, depending on where you live in the city, while commercial trash collection services are provided based on the number of pickups during the week. Additionally, Republic Services provides roll-off container services during the city's trash events and at the city's recycling center. Pursuant to section 5.03, modification to rates of the service contract that the city and BFI Waste Services of Texas, doing business as Republic Services, has in place, a written letter is required by July 31st of each year to inform the city of a unit price adjustment annually. On July 9th, the city manager received said letter requesting a unit price adjustment to be effective February 1, 2025. The section also states that the fees in Exhibit C, which may be charged by Republic Services commencing on the anniversary of the effective date, effective date each anniversary thereafter, shall be adjusted upward according to Consumer Price Index, CPI. The CPI can be found in the U.S. Department of Labor, Bureau of Labor Statistics site at, that one right there. The Consumer Price Index will be utilized as the justification for the annual rate modifications. So beginning on February 1st, this adjusted rate on the CPI is 3.8 percent. Staff has adjusted the fee, the fee schedule within Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances to adjust all sanitation rates related to Republic Services by 3.8 percent. A resident's monthly garbage fee will be increased from $23.70 to $24.60, which is an increase monthly of 90 cents. Staff recommends approval of this CPI rate adjustment as well as approving the attached fee ordinance to be effective February 1, 2025. Regarding water, natural gas, and wastewater rates, in 2023, the city conducted a utility rate study for all those rates. This was designed based on three major study components, which was revenue requirement analysis, cost of service analysis, and rate design analysis. On October 1st, 2023, these rates went into effect. They increased approximately 23.9 percent, 22 percent, and 38.1 percent. And that's water, natural gas, and wastewater, respectively. Now that the city has completed the study, City Council has taken the stance of continuing to move forward with the recommended annual rate increase while continuing to monitor revenue and expense projects. With the completion of this study, the city implemented some changes in the way that the utility rates for water were calculated. Consumption spikes for peak watering seasons create additional storage and system pressurization capital demands. The best practice in utility rate making is to charge an inclining cost for increasingly discretionary use. Therefore, the new water rates include a tiered structure that promotes water conservation by charging larger users of the system, more volumetric rates than those that do not use a lot, while larger water meters place a greater demand for capital-intensive utility. The best practice is to have customers with large meters pay more in base charge. Therefore, the base rates have also been adjusted to place higher base rate fees on those customers with larger water meters. The example that Mr. Weeks gave before and that's presented on your summary here is average consumption of water of 6,000 gallons, natural gas usage of 6 MCFs, and wastewater usage of 3,000 gallons. So for water, you see that the base rates increase as well as each different level of the different tiers. On average, for that usage of 6,000 gallons, you'll see that that part of your water bill would be $4.92. For natural gas, again, the base rate and the volumetric rate are both increasing. The average amount of increase based on that 6 MCFs is $4.46. Lastly, for wastewater, the example we gave was 3,000 gallons, which is a winter average. The base rate increase and the volumetric rate increased as well. So the average total increase on wastewater is about $3.24. So for a resident living inside the city limits using 6,000 gallons of water, 6 MCFs of natural gas, and wastewater charges based on the winter averaging rate of 3,000 gallons of water, they would see their utility bill increasing from $150.38 to $163, which is an increase of $12.62, or 8.4 percent for that month. The proposed utility rate increases would take effect on October 1, 2024. Staff has placed this item on the agenda for further discussion with an action item to be placed on the September 23rd, 2024 City Council meeting agenda.
Mayor and Council, as before, these rates were put in place based on the utility rate study that has been provided as an attachment to your packets for the fiscal year 2025. Again, we continually look at the revenues versus expenditures to make sure that we're on track. And so these rates, as I showed earlier in the budget presentation, are right on track of where we need to be for our fund balances ending where they need to be. And so staff is recommending moving forward with these rate increases. This is the rates that the budget has been prepared. And again, next year, we'll revisit what the study says and compare that with actual revenues and expenditures look like for next year. But again, this was just put on the agenda for a discussion purpose with action to be taken at the next council meeting.
Just as a reminder to us, what did the study say? The study said we need to increase our rates because we're.
Because we need to start, our fund balance was so low, you need to start gathering fund balance enough to be paying for your SIP projects, your annual payments on those, and your debt service. And having enough fund balance in for anything that major to occur. For instance, wastewater treatment plant, the clarifiers, and those type of things that we had some issues with, emergency purchases, that allows us to pull that fund balance to make those purchases that we need.
Right, and the increases were not in the same, the increases that we had done in the past were not incrementally possible for us to continue at those and maintain that.
Right, so the rate study, when we first did it, it gave you two choices. You could have did a rate increase in March, right as the study was done, and then another one in October. And then recommended for every October after that for increases. Council chose to not do the two, the one in March, and October chose to go with just October. So that's why last year's large increase of over 10%, 20% increase, this is back the annual amount. And so the study, based on those percentages, the study is moving forward with those percentage increases year over year. That is correct.
All right, and then I also have a question about Republic. Well, I agree that, you know, if they're doing a good job, we should probably pay them more and maybe our contract says something different. But is the city still finding that they're reasonable in their service that they're providing? I mean, I have not seen Laura Capehart in quite some time. Do we still have the connection that we need with Republic? Are we, should we continue to pay them more and more and more if they're not providing the same service? It seems to me like it's, they always just come pick up the trash, and that's about all.
So we'll tell you, the previous person that was servicing our account liked coming out here, didn't live far from here at the point. And I can't explain why Laura doesn't come out as often. But I will tell you, when we look at customer service, when we email Chris, which is the head person over it, or Laura, we always get a response very quickly. I know that there's been several issues out of Con Lakes where there's been issues out there. We email out and immediately we get results. I know that Public Works, anything we have, we get responses. We had some issues with Alway over here behind Rowland Rye and P.A. Smith, the truck leaking some materials out of there. They came over and cleaned it up. So customer service-wise, I don't have any, we haven't had any issues that I'm aware of.
And just to clarify the dates on this, Republic would be February.
Correct.
Whereas the other, water, gas, wastewater would be October 1.
That is correct.
Okay.
And there's no action item on this?
Yeah.
Thank you.
These proposed changes, Appendix A, be scheduled for 2425. And we'll announce that a vote on these changes will take place on September 23rd, 6:00 p.m. Here in Council Chambers. Item 10, consideration of possible action on Ordinance 1052-24 relating to the rules and regulations creating platting requirements administration, providing for the making of deeds, establishing permits and keys, providing for grave sites and control of declarations and landscaping, creating perpetual care fund, creating an endowment fund, and establishing general administration of the Oakland Cemetery.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Michelle Savinsky, Executive Administrative Assistant. I'm here this evening to discuss with you, again, regarding the ordinance 1052-24. After receiving feedback from the council, the last, at the workshop, staff has revised the ordinance to include the following changes to keep with the beautification of the cemetery. Now, we do have those listed that we had discussed. There were a couple that were removed per our discussion. One of them that we did remove was the outer burial container. We decided not to put that one on, but then we did also speak, because there were some questions about other options besides the outer burial container. And we did visit with one of the gravediggers just to get some feedback on that. So what we did also put in there to add to the ordinance was that the gravedigger will be responsible for placing the sand that we provide, the city provides around the casket, before using the excess dirt to close the grave. So what they'll do is they'll actually place the sand around it and then use the excess dirt on top, whereas before, they were actually using the excess dirt initially and then placing the sand on top of that. So we decided.
That should help with it, yeah.
Yeah, so we decided to try to add that in and see. And we did visit with one of the gravediggers, and they felt that that would make a difference. The other one that we did decide to remove was also about prohibiting alcoholic beverages from the cemetery. We decided to hold off on that one. But we are going to encourage still, as far as them disposing of their trash properly, maybe by adding signage and possibly a trash can to the places that have become a problem, so. We've also got listed out the ones we talked about, the one floral piece allowed at each grave, about the three-inch foundation reveal that we discussed on the last workshop, about allowing a grave space to contain the casket and up to one urn, also for a monument to be able to include an urn if requested. And the graves will need to be dug at a minimum of 50 inches. And this will allow for the placement of a casket with the urn on top of it if they were to choose to do that. We also would like to change the terms of the contracts, because we do contract out some of the grave spaces, for those to make it easier to pay for them. We'd like, currently, they're at 12 months. We would like to change those contracts to 24, just to make it a little easier for them to pay for those, get that taken care of. Other items that we had also discussed and that we were added in pending legal review, the ability to straighten or level monuments that appear unsightly or unsafe. This would be in reference to some of the older monuments that don't have family members to help to take care of those, that they have, carriers looked into this. And so right now, we're working on getting that added in.
Mayor and Council, so I did dig into the statutes.
I knew that one.
Yeah, that's kind of predictable. But anyway, so I reviewed the state law with respect to city cemeteries and the ownership and operation of city cemeteries. And the law is clear that if a city owns and operates a cemetery, it's required to maintain that cemetery. And that includes the leveling and the strengthening markers or memorials. So the city does have a duty to maintain the cemetery with respect to those monuments and markers. It can be contracted out. That's one way to shift liability, to have somebody else do that and shift the liability to them. But cemeteries are also considered a governmental function. And so there's what's called a limited waiver of immunity. Normally, a city is immune, but there's a limited waiver of immunity, which means that the city can be held liable for property damage only when an employee is negligent or wrongly uses motor-driven equipment or motor-driven vehicle. So that would be the only scenario under the Texas Court Cleanings Act that a person could recover property damage.
Due to negligence.
Due to negligence, correct. And so if it is, if the damage is not caused by an employee or, you know, a city representative using motor-driven equipment or vehicle, then that person could only recover, you know, like bodily injury, those types of damages, small property damage. And so I think the, from what I have evaluated, the risk would be small, that the city would actually engage or incur damages or liability for that kind of maintenance, especially if you contract it out. That's something that I think staff has been discussing.
That's correct.
And you can shift that liability to the company that comes in and does that. And they're gonna, you know, they're gonna have the experience, they're gonna have the equipment and so forth that can do that kind of work. But based on my evaluation, I think the risk to the city is small unless the city's actually engaged in doing it and using equipment to do it, motor-driven equipment.
Yes, and currently, we are visiting with some of the monument companies to get price quotes, to see as far as contracting something like this out.
And they would do it basically like we'd say, pick five or six, and they would do it in their schedule, come do that, and then so many a year, just spread it out. It wouldn't be all at one time. And we would approach some different monument companies that can handle that. We, as employees, would not do that on our own. We, as employees, would not do that on our own.
Building on what Council said, if, if some of these headstones that have been there for a very long time are tilted over, does the city have to have permission from, I don't know, family or whatever, to straighten them? Is it, is it our responsibility to do that, or do we have to have permission to do that? Or if we want to keep everything dressed right, dress, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir. The way the state law reads, the way I interpret it, is that would be the duty of the city to engage in. Now, where you make that determination, okay, how far does it have to lean before you're, you know, going to engage in that activity? I think that's a, you know, that's a judgment call for the city. I do think staff, when we talked about it, I think they do try to contact the family members first, some of these monuments, so they're not going to be, you know, they're really old, you're not going to be able to find them.
Maybe a lot of people touching.
Yes, that's right. So I think there's some discretion to be exercised there.
So there could even be utilization of volunteers, maybe, or is that, no?
I wouldn't put that liability.
Yeah, I think you're, you're gonna want somebody who knows what they're doing.
Yeah, yeah.
In terms of, now, now, if they're trained, if you have a company come in and train them, that could be one solution, but I don't know that that's really, you know, the most cost-effective way to do it.
Some of them are kind of small, that they tend to sink on one side. I'm not talking about a, you know, big monolith or something like that.
Nothing that would require a big.
Nothing that James and I couldn't do.
Some of them is pretty tall.
I'm not talking about that.
Michelle and I did talk to the funeral director today, and he says, most of your monuments come with a 10-year warranty, so we're talking about changing our forms to get that information upfront when a monument is set, so that if something does happen, if it's within that 10-year, that family can go back to the monument company and have it without us getting involved with putting it on our list to have paid to get straightened and leveled. So we've done a lot of research in the last two weeks since our workshop.
Yeah.
Yes, we have.
One quick question here. On the, on the contract for the 24-month equal payment.
Mm-hmm.
If someone wants to be buried and they have a contract, do they continue paying and bury someone, or do it have to be paid for, before you bury?
It has to be paid in full prior to the burial.
Okay.
Now, this would be, as far as the contracts, those are, that are, are looking ahead, you know, pre-need, that, that aren't actually needing it at this time. So that's what we use the contracts for, to allow them to pay it off ahead of time. So when they do need it, it is there for them.
And if they miss, when you said default, is it two payments, one payment, or?
We work with them the best that we can. We, we give them every opportunity, and then, you know, if they are having issues with paying, we definitely reach out to them and see what we can do to help them get it paid.
There's no interest or penalty or anything for, if they miss payment. During COVID, we worked a good year with most of them, so.
I like what you've done with this, and the things that you've done and the things that you haven't done. I do have a couple of questions. One of them, in Section 72, Administration, in Paragraph A, the first thing, it says, all administrative matters pertaining to the operation of cemetery shall be under the direction the city manager is designated. The city will communicate about specific grave spaces plots only with, and then it lists five people. It doesn't list funeral directors, and I'm wondering if that's on purpose or it's just assumed.
I think that's a, that's a good change. This, this section was intended to deal with a specific situation that occurred where there was an unauthorized representative trying to make contact with staff and direct activities, and so that's the situation that we were attempting to address, so that it was clear that whoever is dealing with the city staff in terms of the, you know, burial process and the grave sites and so forth, that it would be somebody who is authorized. But I think a funeral director or representative of the funeral director would be appropriate to add to this list.
And the second thing is, going back a page, under the platting in general, in Subparagraph F, every grave space shall be limited to either, there's five choices there, and one of them is one adult casket, and then the second one is one adult casket with a urn. And then I'm just wondering if that could be compressed, if you have one casket and an urn authorized, that seems to include one casket. It didn't want to matter in the long run type thing, it's just cleaning it up a little bit.
So it's two, two separate things. So one is the adult casket and an urn in, in the ground, and the other one is an adult casket with the urn that's actually in the monument part.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the last one, right? But I was saying the difference between the first one and the second one. As long as it's clear to everybody, there's no reason to change it, but.
That's a new one that we're adding. Sometimes the husband or wife may want to be in the casket, the other one may want to be in, be cremated, so that's a new item that we're adding. We just figure if we spell it out, there's no gray area.
Okay.
Now, we're just trying to take away all gray areas.
That's fine, yeah.
I did have a question about Page 7, on letter G, items placed on the grave for commemorative events. Is that kind of the wreaths across America?
Yeah, that was the cost for that.
Okay. And then I had another just idea. There's a lot of questions, a lot of descriptions that I may not be necessarily familiar with. Would it be helpful to have a picture of what you're talking about with the seal and the something and the distance between the whatever, kind of like we did with the sign ordinance, where it is, there's so many different things that you're talking about that I'm not, I don't have any training in the cemetery world, so I wonder if it.
We had some of it in the book last.
Exactly my point, yeah. That maybe if those pictures.
So like a diagram?
I think when she's going to work on a brochure, kind of an easy read brochure for, in addition to, when the customers skip this ordinance, we're also going to make a short version but have pictures and examples, so they know exactly kind of what we're looking at. And that's in the work, she's in the process of working on all of it.
I think that was very helpful, just to see those pictures and say, yeah, clearly this is what is wanted and not.
Yes.
And you might also tell them about, if it is approved, what the next step is to getting the word out and everything.
Yes, so if we do get this approved, then we plan on reaching out to all the residents via Facebook. I do have quite a few email addresses that I've built up too, from, from some of the burials that we've had. Also too, we plan to try to get it out, maybe possibly on the radio, a utility billing, get a flyer out into all the utility bills, and we think that would be a really good way to reach, reach out to everyone, possibly the newspaper as well. Just, we want to try to reach as many people as we can, just to let them know that this, these, you know, this is what we're doing, and these are the changes, and that way everyone is aware of them. We also, if, if so, then we would plan to give them till the end of October to, to go out to their grave spaces and to pull any items that are not compliant with the ordinance, and that way it gives them opportunity to pull those up and take those with them. And then after the end of October, then we'll go out and, and have the facilities and maintenance crews start their cleaning, so.
One of the, that I would like to, to add is on Page 7, and it says, F, said, holiday flowers are official fresh cut, placed on graves must be temporary, placed no sooner than five days during the, during the calendar date. You have left off Mother's Day and Father's Day. I think that's pretty important.
Now, they're allowed to put flowers at any time. We're looking at specific flowers, like as far as Christmas flowers, poinsettias, things of that nature. So they definitely can put any type of flowers that they would like during those, those specific days if they like. I don't know if there's any specific flowers for Mother's Day or Father's Day. We're looking at as far as like for Christmas and things like that. Easter, if there's like Easter lilies, things like that, that were particularly pertain to a specific holiday, then those would be allowed five days prior and then removed after the, on the 11th day, after the holiday. Because we don't want Christmas flowers up, you know, year-round, that sort of thing, so we're trying to, or if they were to put, say, for Halloween, if they would go put, you know, who knows what, you know, the orange and black flowers, things like that. We're just trying to keep it, you know, just strictly for the holiday time. And then the rest of the year, they could put regular flowers out.
Yeah, it says holidays include but are not limited to.
And you may have this in there, and I'm sorry if I missed it. Do you have a statement that says, we will come through regularly and maintain, blah, blah, blah?
So previously, we did cleanups on a monthly basis. Unfortunately, when we announced those cleanups, I think I had mentioned before that people were aware of it, and they would go take their, their items off that were non-compliant, and then as soon as the cleanup was over, they would place those items back out on the grave spaces again until the next cleanup. So we have decided to go ahead and just on an as-needed basis, as our crew is out working in the cemetery, if they see something that's not compliant, then they would be allowed to go ahead and remove those items.
I'm just suggesting that maybe merely saying that we are going to do that will prevent people.
Oh, yes, it is in there, and I apologize, I don't have it right in front of me, but it is written in there.
Okay.
Yes, it does state on an as-needed, as-needed basis.
It's on Page 7, number I.
Right, the other one you added, mine. Nice.
I think, is it highlighted?
It is highlighted, yes.
I tried to do that for y'all.
Lot of stuff in the last five years.
No, there was talk about trash and the receptacles and all that. I can't recall, is there actually one, a receptacle at the exit to the cemetery?
Oh.
Alicia?
No, I don't think so.
No, we can.
That might, that might be the, I mean, I know that's probably not the prettiest place to put it, but maybe we could find one that's a little more attractive looking than a barrel, and that would encourage it as they're leaving.
As they're leaving.
And maybe not leave it in the actual cemetery.
Well, I do know that they are spread out of the cemetery, so, but yes, that would definitely be an option.
Just a thought.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Mayor and Council, if you're going to act on this, please remember on Section 7-2A, adding the word funeral home staff as a number.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Ordinance 1052-24 with.
No, sir, I'm not, I'm not recognizing you.
Thank you. We want some information about.
Well, we, we'd like to keep the things working, and you can speak, you can speak with staff afterwards.
I'm moved to approve it with the amendment to A, Section 7.7-2A, adding funeral director for.
Funeral home staff.
Funeral home staff.
Second. This is for the Ordinance 1052-24, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Fulls, second by Mr. Gussman, is that correct, to approve Ordinance 1052-24 with the addition of the funeral.
Staff.
Home staff. Home staff. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Thank y'all for your hard work on that.
Thank you.
Y'all did a lot of, a lot of good work.
Thank you very much.
Put the heart what y'all said, and we, we did a lot of calling.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Michelle, too, for all your. And I apologize for the last comment, that was just made.
There's a man with a cloth. Okay. Sorry. Item 11, consideration and possible action on Ordinance 1051-24, amendment initiated by the City of Navasota for the purpose of prohibiting tobacco, hookah, and vapor retail stores in Navasota, Grimes County, Texas, 77868. Proposed zoning amendment amends, oh, here we go again.
Mayor, I sent you a cheat sheet in your email, if you want to go reference.
Oh, you did?
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you.
Could you say, as listed on the agenda, item.
Can I do that?
Yes, you can.
It amends art, it, it amends per, what can I say?
As listed on the agenda.
As listed on the agenda, item number 11.
Okay. Well, that beats my cheat sheet.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, as you read this ordinance, even though the item does still reference the tobacco language, we just left it in there because originally that's how it was advertised in the public hearing, but the actual ordinance itself, we heard the feedback given by both planning and zoning and council, Carrie did a great job on making this ordinance refined and really meeting the definition and the intention behind all the discussion, and so all tobacco language has been removed from the ordinance, so our fellow cigar smokers can rejoice. That is, it can continue. It has, Carrie did a great job on defining what the, what a vape and the, and the health ramifications of vaping and hookah and those things, and so I think it just adds to the strength of the ordinance, protecting the welfare and health of residents. So there is one minor change Carrie read on the second reading, I think that's the very last, very last section.
Correct. In Section 19, despite all of us reading this ordinance multiple times, we're still getting used to this one reading, change in the charter, and so Section 19, we would recommend deleting the verbiage quote "on second reading" so that it would read, "This ordinance shall become effective from and after its passage, comma, approval and adoption and its publication as may be required by law," so that we're deleting the reference to the second reading because that's no longer required.
Mayor and Council, I have made that change already, so it's in your packet to sign if it is approved.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Ordinance 1051-24 with the amendment to Section 19, removing "on second reading."
Second. Motion by Mr. Fulls.
A second.
Second. And we have any further discussion? Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I just have a question. I don't know what the purpose of this is. Are we concerned about appearances, or are we concerned about stopping the, the sale of the vapes and e-cigarettes and everything? I don't see that, that this is lowering the sales at all. It doesn't stop anybody from doing anything, it just stops somebody from putting in another vape shop. I'm a big believer in, in the free market, and I just assume a couple of them come in here, all of them come in and blow each other's minds out. Literally. All, all go bankrupt because they, they divided the market up too much. It isn't going to earn anything to pass it, but it just seems like a, an exercise in futility.
Mayor and Council, one of the primary reasons staff brought this to you was for the aesthetics that generally the vape shops bring to a community, and that was what we presented to P&amp;Z. P&amp;Z had overwhelming majority agreed that the look and feel of a vape shop that's currently, that they currently are, are going to communities, it's not something that they prefer in Navasota, and so that was part of the reason. And if anything we can do that prohibits and makes it harder for underage young adults to have access to this is always welcome. It was something that the school district, as well as our police department.
It was something that the school district, as well as our police department welcomed as well. So that's, I would say, the primary purchase for the aesthetics, if we can decrease the usage among young adults, that's an indirect positive for doing this.
And I did pass one in Madisonville.
The green?
Holy moly, yeah. It was all puke green and quite ugly, right on the main drag.
Incredibly, though, ugly is not a leepa.
No, it sure not, but it sure is an ugly, ugly town when you do stuff like that. Anyway, we have a motion and a second, and so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Consideration possible action on the official ballot for the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool Board of Trustees election.
Mayor and Council, enclosed is the official ballot for the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool Board of Trustees, elections for place 11, 12, 13, and 14. Within your packet, I provided you the names of each place. Place 11 is Randy Criswell and Robert S. Davis. Randy is the city manager for Woolforth and has served on the TML Risk Pool Board Trustees since 2015. Robert S. Davis is city attorney of Bullard and also a senior partner at Flowers Davis PLC in Tyler. Place 12 is Cedric Davis Senior, Senior, he's the city manager of Mathis. Rocky Hawkins is a council member of Gladwater. Allison Hayward is council member of Shirts and is also on the TML Board of Directors and currently the TML president-elect. And then Rudy Zepeda was the finance director for, of Santa Fe. Place 13 is Harlan Jefferson, deputy city manager for Burleson and James Quinn, city administrator for Hutchins. And place 14, Mike Land is the only recommendation for that. So each member's allowed to vote for, on one member in each place, the term is for six years, and any of these you can do a write-in, so there's opportunity for write-ins. In the past, I've kind of gave you recommendations, the only one I'm gonna give you a recommendation on is on place 14.
I have reviewed these, and I know some of these folks, and I was gonna make a, make a proposed motion to, or a motion to vote Mr. Criswell for place 11, Ms. Hayward for place 12, Mr. Quinn for place 13, and Mr. Land for 14.
Second.
So motion and a second, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. Item 13 is the consent agenda, which consists of amendments for August 2024, municipal court report for the month of August 2024, and financials for the month of July and August 2024.
Mr. Mayor, I move if we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion by Mr. Guestman, second by Mr. Fulton, to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carries. And with that, we adjourn.